In commission meeting for February tenth, twenty twenty-five roll call, please.
Pacino?
Here.
Evans? Matamore?
Here.
Is there white? O'Toole?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
And Moody?
Here.
Seven present, zero absent.
All right, so first order of business, are there any changes to the proposed agenda or we have motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
So move all those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, say nay? Agenda approved. Next item business are are minutes. Uh, is there um any changes to the minutes or should they be approved as as presented for the January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, so um all those favor uh of proving the minutes, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, say nay? All right, minutes approved. Forgot to second the the agenda, but we'll just pass pass through that, sorry. Next uh is citizen comments on non-agenda related topics, no action will be taken if anyone wants. Anyone wants to step up to the podium, state their name and talk for two or three minutes. This is the opportunity. Seeing none, we'll move to the next item, which is planning commission and staff reports and comments. Derek, Philip, Joe and Emma? Commission members, anything that um you know that you want to share with us? Okay, silence of the lambs apparently. Next, our disclosures, ex parte communications, potential conflicts of interest.
Just to sure.
Yeah, Tom.
I don't know if this would be a big one, but I in my other personality do business with the sign company. And I do a lot of business with them, so it's a small town, I don't think it would prejudice me, but I'll leave it to the to the board to decide.
What what kind of business are you talking about, Tom?
Sign company, I get I buy a lot of signs for the uh Laramie Rifle Range.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right. I I don't have a problem with that, anybody? Okay, Tom, you can you can play with us.
I I'm gonna be recusing myself from item six B, I B C P twenty-four, zero, zero, zero for the American Space Rush sign shop.
Okay, so you're you're doing work for them, is that?
Yeah.
Right, very good with makes that make sense. Okay, next order of business, um current planning projects, uh old business, there there is none. On the topic of new business, the first item is CUP twenty dash twenty-four dash oh six. Uh, three, one, three, south, second street, range, coffee, roasting. Joe, please fill us in.
Chair Commission, um so the conditional use permit that is before you today is for a wholesaler in relation to um coffee roasting that will be a part of the range coffee business that is occurring on second street between um Garfield, it's grand. This application need to come through because within the DC zoning district, any wholesalers um do need to get a conditional use permit. This is like generally, we do recognize that roasting is an accessory use to a coffee shop. However, because the applicant is um selling and distributing on a somewhat regional, smaller scale, um but still um on a wholesale basis, they did need to go through this process. As part of CUP permits, um we do include um the surrounding land use and zoning around it, you will see that um this property does sit firmly within the DC zoning district. And the majority of the uses around it are retail commercial uses with the exception of one on the south side of their property, which is a museum. We also, as part of this, are required to have findings of fact and then staff analysis on all the items that are um a part of um LMC fifteen oh six, zero, six, zero E, which does outline each of our procedures. Um, and so let me go through that with you um quick, somewhat quickly. Ingress and egress to the property and structure, so this property does uh or this structure does monopolize the entire property, so there's no drive aisles or anything like that on it, it is using um, you know, on the street parking and an alleyway behind it um on their east side of the building. Um, and because it is a new building, um it does meet all the requirements per the IBC, which is our building code. Um, and so it does meet all ingress, egress um requirements, as well as ADA um requirements, which is um somewhat unique to our downtown area. As far as off-street parking and loading, so this, like I've already said, does not have any off-street parking on it. Um, on the east side of the alley, there is a setback of seventeen feet, um which can be used for some loading and offloading. Um, but was not identified as specifically parking area behind it within the site plan review process. Refuse and service, um all the refuse um does get serviced within the alleyway on the east side. Um, like a lot of the other properties in that area. Utilities with reference to location availability and compatibility, so all of this was worked out within the site plan process and um is being able to be serviced um by city utilities as well as um our our franchise utilities, so that's, you know, uh gas and electric, screening and buffering, um so this property does encompass the entirety of the lot itself. Um, and there's very minimal screen and buffering requirements within the DC zoning district. Signs, if any, um and proposed exterior lighting with reference to glare, traffic safety, economic effects, um so on and so forth. Um, so again, this was art um of the sign or probably the site plan process, we do do a photometric plan, looking at the lighting um of the building itself, um and it did meet the requirements. The signed permits were submitted on January twenty seventh and are in review currently. Um, but as of right now, there's no major concerns that are occurring there um that would affect this specific this use, um and I the signage that will be onsite is related to the coffee portion of it, um not wholesaling or anything like that. Proposed use is appropriate to the specific loc- location with related to intensity and bulk, so um this one is um it is appropriate to this area, it's a relatively lower level of wholesale. Um, generally, if you're thinking about wholesaler, you're thinking about big bulk, um, you know, storage and shipping with like a lot of um trucking and stuff like that associated with it, and um we are not under the impression that any of that will occur in association with with their wholesaling aspect. Proposed use is appropriate to the specific location relative to public health, safety um and convenience. There is no issues that we could identify that were um would be an issue related to this. All all their facilities are being inspected by the state health inspector, um and so um a lot of that will go through them um in relation to their wholesaling aspect of it. And then the proposed site is adequate in size, shape and accommodation for the intended use. So the setback um does meet all requirements, there's no retaining walls or any walls of any sort other than the building walls. There was no landscaping in relation to the downtown area, there's very minimal standards related to that, whereas if you look in like the B-two zoning district, there's pretty intense standards for for landscaping, um buffer yards are not applicable. And any specific standards um to the use set forth in chapter fifteen, ten is not applicable. Legal notice was published in the Laramie Boomerang on January twenty-fifth. Um, letters were sent to surrounding property owners within three hundred feet of the subject property on January twenty-seventh um in accordance with um the LMC. One business owner did call to kind of check in what was going on, um they did have, they did make a comment on odor, um I will say that it's something that you notice every once in a while in downtown, um it's not a constant thing, there all the other roasters in that area are not roasting twenty-four hours a day, um but it is a smell that you will notice. But yeah, they they had some comment about the odor. But yeah, the and so in conclusion, the planning division's recommendation is for approval of this item. And the applicant is here for any questions that you may want to pose to them.
Okay, well, let's take it, questions for um for Joe first, Tom?
Uh, the only question I had is just from the minimal plans we got, it looks like the roasters in room section B and it vents through the roof, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so odor should be a minimal at street level.
Correct.
So it's at it's at the second, the top of the second story?
Yeah, it's at the top of the second floor, vents through the roof of the structure, is that correct? Yeah, so that odor should be minimal at the street.
We don't get much wind.
No.
Okay. Any other?
Any mitigation that can be done for that odor problem?
That may be a better question for the applicant themselves, I do believe that the roasting equipment does mitigate some of it, so you're not getting the full force, I think, but that's partially coming from um other similar CUPs that we've dealt with and other roasters in the area, so that that would again be a better question for the applicant themselves.
Joe, have you um received any sort of questions overall for the other two uh roaster facilities of people complaining or commenting on the odor in downtown?
Nothing specific that um I can think of, I've I think every once in a while in a meeting, somebody might might mention it, like, hey, there's this smell, what is this smell? Sometimes it's a little hard to tell exactly what smell they're talking about, um sometimes they talk about like a burnt toast smell, um but uh i- it's a little bit hard to say when somebody mentions odors in that area, because I'd like to remind you that third and grand is right there, filled with all sorts of exhausts and stuff that is a little bit hard to tell where things are coming from. So the answer, the short answer is this, no.
Okay. Any other other questions from commission?
I was just um wondering whether as part of the material that was submitted to you all, was there any kind of uh business plan that indicated the amount that was being planned to be roasted, um is that it didn't, in what you provided, it didn't look like wholesale was limited to any kind of amount, but did do we know what scale is being considered and is it comparable to what's already being done in a couple of places downtown?
Um, that that wasn't provided, the applicant did say small batch, um which generally means not like, you know, um like folders or anything like that, um but um that that would probably be a better question for them.
Okay, we'll bring up the applicant, um please.
Hi. Do you want me to just address those questions or just?
Or?
Or do you want?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, uh, volume is super hard, right, to explain, I mean, ma- mainly the the we're roasting for the cafe side of our our own, and then we're going to sell. And wholesale is a hard question, right, because like we're selling small bags, direct to consumer online, so like because we're selling out of state and plan to have a website that would sell out of state, we fall into the the state health health side of things. But we're we also, if someone walks in, this happens all the time at our range leather business, someone comes in and they have a ranch in Saratoga and they want to add um our products to their offering at their guest shop, that's a huge driver for our business. And so we want to make that available um for the side of coffee in in wholesale months.
Is there, what's the capacity of the equipment that you're putting in and and what are your current operations relevant to the?
Yeah, and that's probably the hardest answer, because our current operations are zero. Uh, so like a scale, like it that is um a difficult question for us that we have to deal with is like how 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 often, how many batches are we going to re-roast it, we honestly just to the for the foreseeable future, like we might be roasting one day a week uh on that side of things to because it's we don't have the volume on that side of things, uh to ask about the roaster, the roaster is a fifteen kilogram roaster, so we can do thirty pounds of coffee at a time.
If if there were issues being uh stated about odor, would would roasting be able to done at night?
Um, most likely not, uh but what I will speak uh to you, John, uh we the roaster that we're buying is like what we've purchased is uh probably the most efficient uh roaster out there, there's two types of roasters, there's air roasting and then there's drum roasting. Um, drum roasting is kind of the big, you know, you heat up the drum, uh this is it has air with it too, and it burns really clean. It also has an after burner, um i- as part of it in the system, it's a a US-made uh roaster and it burns at like uh fourteen hundred degrees, so it burns off almost all the smell. So if that answers the question of what to mitigate smell in coffee, after burners are the op- are basically the option, and it has one as part of it.
Any fire prevention methods required?
So the roaster actually has water hooked up to it, um and so it has, that's all, and it it has water into it, so if there's literally would douse it if there was any fire.
Any other questions from commission for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you very much. Yes, uh, public, if you have any comment on this conditional use permit for range coffee roasting? Seeing none, okay, any final um any comments, final comments amongst uh commission?
Some of us like the smell of coffee and consider it the smell of salvation.
I'm good to see you're well well taken care of, Donald. All right, is there a motion on the floor?
So I move to approve a conditional use permit for operation of a wholesale business in a commercial structure located at three thirteen, south second street. Zone DC for downtown commercial district. Uh, based on findings of fact and conclusions of law and subject to this all staff's recommended conditions.
Second.
Is there a second from Tom, okay. Final comments? Seeing none, roll call vote on the motion?
Pacino?
Aye.
Evans?
Yes.
Matamore?
Aye.
Is there white?
Aye.
O'Toole?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
And Moody?
Aye.
That is seven yeses and zero noes.
Okay, motion approves, uh conditional use permit is approved. Next on the item is um CUP dash twenty-four dash oh seven, seven twelve Canby Street interface? Good Samaritan? Joe?
Chair Commission, um so this conditional use is for an expansion um that is occurring on at seven twelve Canby for Laramie Interfaith. And by expansion, I just means a slight renovation change to the um CUP that was previously approved in twenty twenty. Um, as most of you know, um Laramie Interfaith has been there for for quite some time at this point, um but per our CUP requirements, when changes to the approved plans occur, they do need to come before you all get that approved once again. Um, so that is why this is before you. The changes that are being suggested are on the um north and east side of the building. Um, what they are doing is mostly just changing um the flow of the building and where doors are located and enclosing a little area that they currently use for for some of their services anyways. But again, because of these changes that are occurring, we do have to bring it before you yet again. In the surrounding area, um it is mostly um zoned R-three, which is what this property currently is. Um, R-three is multifamily, um around it, there's kind of a mix of single family and multifamily housing um in that area. Directly across the street is La Bonte Park, um and so as far as a busy area, it's it's not really that um by any stretch of the imagination. As per section fifteen oh six, zero, six, zero E, um that um we do have some required findings that we do need to go over. Ingress and egress on the property is not changing at all, it's what's currently there, it's what was approved previously. Um, there's no changes in circulation, um and there was no concern about safety or related to either of these items. Off-street parking and loading, um current parking on the property is adequate for the site, um and there is no suggested changes to that. There, as part of the previous CUP, there were some areas that were no parked um on that um north side of the building, that's not changing either. And yeah. Um, off-site impacts to economic noise, glare or odor effects, um there was no concerns related to this. Um, primarily, the business is is non-perishables, um those sort of things, and isn't cooking or anything like that, that would bring up those sort of concerns, um and the these specific changes won't impact the the use and the trap, the amount of car traffic we'd see in there. Um, refuse and service areas, they do have a um trash enclosure, which which did meet the CUP in site plan process um previously. Utilities with reference to location availability ability um and compatibility. There was no concerns with this, with this specific um changes, screening buffering um with reference to type, dimension or character, again, there was no concern um there, and we did believe that um everything was adequate onsite. There is a sign and exterior lighting associated with this use and but it is not changing from the previous one. The, there's no issues with um until intensity or bulk. There's no um proposed or there's no um everything onsite is appropriate to public health, safety and convenience. The setbacks are appropriate for the site, and there's nothing that's going to be changing that those. There's no retaining walls or anything that is going to change, landscaping is not changing, buffer yards aren't changing. And yeah, legal notice was sent out in the Laramie Boomerang on November twenty eighth, um or sorry, November twenty-third. And there was no concerns that were promoted by neighbors. Apologize, that's incorrect, it was not sent out in November, it was sent out in January. Both uh the Laramie Boomerang um legal notice as well as the the notice to adjacent property owners. Staff's recommendation is to approve this CUP um with the condition, conditions approved. I will note that all the conditions that are in there were part of the previous conditional use, and so we are just continuing that forward. Um, so there's nothing new that the applicant has not already seen as part of their previous CUP. I'm here for any additional questions, but then and the applicant's representative is here for any further questions.
Okay, uh, questions from commission, Tom?
Just a general one, this is seems, is it statute that requires uh an additional CUP process, because this is like a minimal amount of change, I mean, but it put the applicant through it, I mean, is that state statutes, municipal code or?
So that is municipal code, um and I think as part of our conversation in relation to this, we did recognize that and have have considered maybe making some changes so that these sort of minimal changes are coming before you at a regular basis.
All right, that that's my only question.
Any other questions from commission for for Joe? Tom, uh, John?
Are there any uh codes or requirements that are new to this addition, you know?
So as as part of this addition, like they will have to um come into compliance with the IBC, um which is the building code, um all new construction, all additions will have do have to do that, but as far as city code, um there was nothing major that would have affected this um compared to the um their previous CUP in twenty twenty.
Is there anything of commission that they'd want to talk to the applicant, or is folks satisfied with what they've heard so far, Donald?
Yeah, I've got a question for the Interfaith folks.
Okay, so we'll bring bring up the applicant, if you can come forward, state your name, please.
Good afternoon, my name's Josh Watanabe, I'm the executive director for Laramie Interfaith.
All right, Donald.
Hi, Josh, is is there any uh, because I know the inside, the configuration inside the building, is there by changing this configuration, does it mean folks will be spilling out the door?
Uh, no, the the changes, the the entry door that's being changed next to the parking lot will move into a new waiting room, so that's the interior itself will be remodeled as a part of this.
So there'll be a waiting room inside, so.
Correct.
Because it looked like it was a straight shot to go to the counter.
Yeah. There'll be a foyer and then um it'll actually be pushed over um into that northeast corner. You've been in, so that's where my office is, that'll be gone.
Okay, okay, thanks, that's it.
And and Josh, the um the you you have some new office space where you're enclosing that um that patio area, is it going to be office space in there?
Correct, yeah, that would be moving office space um down to that southeast corner uh to replace some of that space that's being lost up in the northeast corner. Um, that patio is there, but of minimal use, and so it was easy to sort of look at enclosing that.
Gotcha, thank you. Any other questions from commission? Seeing none, thank you, Josh, appreciate it. Um, public comment on this conditional use permit on Interfaith? Seeing none?
I'll make a motion.
Uh, Tom, you make a motion.
I move to approve a conditional use permit for the establishment of a community service on a lot zoned R-three multifamily district located at seven, one, two, Canby Street based on findings of fact and conclusions of law and subject to all of staff's recommended conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Jake, any final discussion amongst commission? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Pacino?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Matamore?
Aye.
Is there white?
Aye.
O'Toole?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Moody?
Aye.
Uh, seven yeses and zero noes.
Okay, conditional use permit for Interfaith is is approved. Uh, next item of business is CUP dash twenty-five dash zero, 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 five at two, two, three, south Adam Street Starbucks. Philip?
Good evening, Chair, members of the commission. The request before you, CUP twenty-five dash five is for the establishment of a Starbucks coffee shop with a drive-through at two, two, three, south Adam Street within the B-one limited business district and R-two M limited multifamily zoning district. And the main reason that this CUP is in front of you today is because the lot is split zoned and the northern thirty feet of the lot is zoned R-two M. And in order to have this type of establishment in that zoning district, a CUP is required. The proposal's been carefully reviewed in accordance with the Laramie Municipal Code, particularly the code sections regarding conditional use permits on general standards. The applicant Starbucks Corporation partnership with SR Commercial LLC seeks to construct and operate a twenty-four hundred, approximately twenty-five hundred square foot coffee shop with a drive-through on that one acre parcel. Um, as mentioned, the site is primarily zoned B-one, that northern part, that northern thirty feet approximately zoned R-two M. A little bit about the proposed development, I'll certainly let Sid from SR Commercial um step SR Commercial um, step forward after my presentation with any. More questions on the detail of of that specific Starbucks location, but. The site plan that we have in for this uh, shows the twenty seven space parking lot. Slightly exceeding the minimum requirement uh, there, but. Given the high volume of Starbucks, as we all know, we uh, feel that that's warranted. Um, not part of the CUP process, this is just kind of giving you a uh, flavor of of what's going in there. Um, the the parking space number is not part of the CUP. The drive-through has twelve stacking spaces, it's adequate, um, although the buffering, um. If if you recall, we do have that matrix in our development standard section that shows the different zoning districts. On, you know, the top and along the side, similar to the Super Bowl squares, right? Where it's like the, where you, you know, the scores after each quarter, except it's zoning districts. And so you can look with the use there, which um, well. What type of landscaping would be required? When a B one zoned parcel is adjoining a R two M zoned parcel, so. Those, that buffer and that landscaping is met in the site plan requirement. The location near an inner, a ma- a the major interstate exit three eleven. In our eyes makes it a good site um, for a coffee shop, highly visible. Uh, both for Laramie residents and travelers passing through. Um, a little bit about the findings of fact for a conditional use permit. Following a thorough um, review, staff's determined that project meets all the required findings. Um, there's adequate ingress and egress. Site will be accessed via South Adam Street. With the well-planned circulation pattern. Uh, there's sufficient off-street parking um, and loading areas. The. Um, the mitigation of off-street, our off-site impacts such as noise, glare, um, and others. Um, are are negligible here, we feel. Proper utility connections and stormwater management, all that is in on Adam Street there. Um, there is Maria's Restaurant, which is directly south of this site, just to. Make sure everyone's aware kind of the the setting of the site there. As I mentioned, sites surrounded by commercial property, making appropriate use as well. And we haven't received any um, public opposition after legal notice was published. Um, so there's no. Um, response from any property owner within three hundred feet of the proposed Starbucks location. So based on these facts, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit. Um, based on standard, uh, subject to standard conditions. Such as adherence to all submitted site plans that are already in and being reviewed. And then a couple others, the mission of assigned permit, as well as all other building codes need to be met. So I will take any questions, but I'll also invite the chair to invite the applicant up if there's anything else.
Commissioners, any questions for Philip? Seeing none, if the applicant wants to step up and and say a few things, they're welcome to do so.
Good evening, hi, my name is Sid Squirrel and happy to be here and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions for, for Sid?
Is this design going to be a standard Starbucks cookie cutter type?
It is, it's a prototype. It's, yeah, it is the typical Starbucks prototype. Yes.
Okay. No, no further questions from, from commission? Pretty easy duty, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you much. So is there a motion on the floor?
I'll move to approve a conditional use permit for the establishment. Of a Starbucks coffee shop with a drive-through located at two two three South Adam Street. Based on findings of fact, a conclusions of law and subject to all staff's recommended conditions.
Hey, before doing anything, is there public comment out there on this? I'm sorry, I forgot that again. Seeing no public comment. We'll take Tom's uh, motion um, at face value, is there a second on? Second from Donald, any final discussion from commission? Seeing none, roll call please.
Pacino?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Madamore?
Aye.
Isler White?
Aye.
O'Toole?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
And Moody?
Aye.
Uh, seven yeses, zero no's.
Okay, motion for conditional use permit for Starbucks passes, very good. Okay, so Jake, you're gonna bid us adieu? And the next item is CUP dash twenty four dash zero zero four. Uh, six oh six, Second Street, American Paintbrush Sign Shop, Philip?
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission, tonight we're considering CUP twenty four dash four, a conditional use permit. Requesting for the establishment of a sign shop at six oh six Second Street within the downtown commercial district. The applicant W W C Engineering on behalf of American Paintbrush seeks approval to operate. A sign shop that will include both retail space as well as a production area for sign assembly. This location was previously a parts retail store. And a recent text amendment to the zoning code, which I believe most of the commission was part of that process. Now allows, now allows sign shops as a conditional use in the DC district. The proposed operation will include vinyl covering, sign backing, preparation, and vehicle wraps. A use that aligns uh, well, uh, uh, at that scale within the existing downtown business. With, within the downtown business area. Uh, similar to CUPs you've heard already this evening, we we review certain things and. To make sure that the site is compatible um, for the use. The access and parking, there's no issues that we found, there's two access points from First and Second Streets. Well, as fourteen off-street parking spaces already there with ADA accessibility. Um, screening and landscaping, uh, there will be a six-foot privacy fence on the south side of the property, which is also, there's some residential down there. Um, and enhanced landscaping's also been approved in the site plan for this site. Uh, along First Street. Uh, most of the work uh, is going to be. Or, or, you know, most of the work, including any of the, any of the slightly even noisy work will be done inside, right? Um, so we don't anticipate many off-stri- off-site impacts. Um, with with this use in that area as well. Traffic impact, a trip generation estimate found that the project. Uh, will not significantly impact uh, local traffic conditions. As, as mentioned, it's it's mostly manufacturing, I mean. There is. Going to be a. S- small retail space associated with it, but the on, on-street or the off-street parking. Um, will suffice for that. Legal notice was published, letters were sent, to date, no public comments or concerns have been received. Therefore, staff finds that the application meets all requirements for approval and um, we recommend that this body approve this CUP. Glad to take any questions.
Okay, any questions for Philip from commissioners?
Chair? I just add one question, because I, um, in terms of, you've, you've referred a couple times to site plans. And um, es- especially with something like this. That is changing the use of the property. Um, I I have enough information here to act on this, um, but. Is that something that we could consider going forward, just having a copy of the site plan that was approved? Because that just would allow me, I I don't know what others think, but. Um, I'm presum- is it, is it true that the site plan has already been approved? And and now we're, and I don't, did we have, did that go through the co- the planning commission before?
No, all we had was a uh, text amendment to allow a sign shop, but. It was pretty thoroughly discussed what they were gonna.
Yeah, okay.
Do on the location, but no, we didn't have a site plan.
I just think when we're being asked about the conditional use, changing the use. Seeing the site plan and being able to visualize the things that you're saying here are being done to minimize the potential. Impacts on neighbors would be a helpful piece of. The review of the conditional use, is that practical or?
So through you, uh, Mr. Chair, um, we did approve the site plan administratively. Because there was already in a uh, a use that is allowed within the DC zoning district taking place in there, which is primarily office. So the site plan that was submitted took that into account. As well as this use with the calculation of the parking requirements and so forth, so. The, the site plan, that, that's what I mean by the site plan being approved. Because we can do that administratively for uses that are allowed.
Right.
District, I absolutely agree with you that, including, you know, that site plan.
It's just a drawing, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, it's a construction drawings for the site.
I find it helpful.
Include those in future CUPs to, to give a better visualization of what's going on.
All right, well, we'll be watching you, Philip.
Is there gonna be a paint shop associated with this?
Sir?
Is there a paint shop associated with this?
Uh, Chair, through you, it's uh, American Paintbrush is moving their sign operation in there. Um, the, the painting I would, I would, th- this is for the sign shop specifically and accessory. Things to that, so most of it is vinyl on signs and, and that's what. That's what the applicant has told us is going to be going on there, so I don't know how much painting is going to be. Going on, but I'd invite the applicant if they want to expand on that, but.
Any other questions? If the applicant can, can come up, um, and. Maybe address uh. John's question, that would be great.
John, this was your question?
And state your name, just.
I'm sorry, Britta Starks.
Okay, great.
Painting, we know, despite the name American Paintbrush, we haven't painted in twenty years, so it's literally all vinyl and all.
Okay.
Application of that printing.
Are there any other like hazardous materials on?
No, no, there's, I I mean, I don't know what you would refer to as hazardous, so, but it's, we literally print vinyl, cut vinyl, apply it to substrates.
Great. Any other questions from commission? Seeing none? Well.
Good luck.
Good luck, thank you. Um, is there any public comment regarding this um, conditional use permit? Seeing none? Um, is there a motion from Donald?
Donald's thinking about his coffee.
Not really. Plenty of coffee tonight, so. I move to appro- approve a conditional use permit for the establishment of a sign, sign shop located at six oh six. Second Street within the downtown commercial district based on findings of fact and conclusions of law and. Subject to the following conditions, which I'm not gonna read.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Second from John.
That's slow on the show there.
Um, any, any final um, comments on, on this motion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Pacino?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Madamore?
Aye.
Isler White?
Aye.
O'Toole?
Aye.
Schneider is recused, Moody?
Aye.
That is six yeses, zero no, and one recusal.
Okay, um. C- CUP approved for American Paintbrush signs and graphics, best of luck. Okay, the next item. Jake, welcome. You're back. Um, is text amendment TA dash twenty four dash oh four amendments to chapter fifteen dot. Two two, non-conformities for the allowance of digital billboards within city limits, Philip?
Yes, Honorable Chair, members of the commission, um, just, you know, a, a. Prelude to these next two items and kind of talking about the difference between the two. This first variance is for one specific billboard in um, in town at twenty one thirty East Grand. Uh, for this, for that billboard only. And then after we discuss and take whatever action on that item. We will talk about the text amendment, or wait.
Text amendment first.
Alright, so let's do the text amendment first, which has to do with all the billboards, all. Um, and and they're all considered non-conforming in town. Um, and then when we adjourn. And you guys reconvene as the Board of Adjustment, we will hear. For just that one, a sign at twenty one thirty East Grand, so. Just a little prelude there. As mentioned, right now, we're gonna discuss TA twenty four oh four, a proposed text amendment to chapter fifteen twenty two. Uh, which is the non-conformity section of Laramie Municipal Code regarding non-conforming billboards. So just to be clear, there is no non-conforming billboard section currently in the um. Fifteen twenty two, fifteen twenty two has sections on uh, non-conforming signs, non-conforming parking lots. A couple others, uh, but does not have um, a section on. Non-conforming billboards, so all this language that is in that connection will be new language proposed to be added to this section. Um, this, the request submitted by Lamar Advertising seeks to modify the UDC. To allow for the conversion of existing non-conforming static billboards into digital billboards. Under certain conditions and criteria that are listed. The proposed amendment outlines parameters such as billboard size, height, light intensity, and display d- duration. However, after a thorough review, staff is recommending denial of this request based on findings of fact. Legal considerations in the long-term planning goals of the city. Provide a little background, uh, billboards in Laramie have been considered non-conforming, I should say, billboards outside of the I eighty. Um, corridor have been considered non-conforming uses since two thousand nine. With the clear intent of phasing them out over time. This policy direction is supported by multiple planning documents, including the city's comprehensive plan. The three-two-one Third Street Plan, as well as the downtown design guidelines. Each of these plans prioritizes reducing billboard presence to maintain a visually cohesive and aesthetically. Appealing community. While Lamar has refined their proposal to include a one-to-one replacement ratio among other criteria. And that one-to-one would mean that they would be able to just basically convert one at a time. Um, from static to digital, this amendment. Directly conflicts with established regulations that we have in place. Uh, the fundamental issue here is that permitting digital billboards prolongs the presence of non-conforming signage. Rather than working toward their gradual elimination, which is the stated intent of our zoning code. I'm gonna highlight five primary reasons why staff is recommending denial. First off, I've mentioned a little bit already, the incompatibility with existing regulations. The proposed amendment would weaken the longstanding standards for non-conforming billboards and contradicts. Or non-conforming uses, which this bill, the, the, these five billboards are. And contradicts the city's policy of limiting billboard expansion. Secondly, the negative visual environmental impact, digital billboards contribute to light pollution, which affects residential areas. And alters the visual character of commercial corridors. Thirdly, precedent for erosion of our signage controls. Approval of this amendment could lead to further requests for relaxed billboard regulations. Perhaps not just for the nonconforming ones, but new ones altogether, weakening our ability to manage sign proliferation effectively. Fourth, conflict with planning goals and development policies. Our adopted plans, as mentioned before, those three um directly emphasize reducing sign clutter and enhancing urban design, allowing digital billboards is obviously inconsistent with those objectives. And lastly, there in 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 staff's eyes, there's no justifiable public benefit with switching in these areas from static to digital. The proposal serves uh private business interests rather than addressing any clear need or hardship. Lamar has noted in their co- correspondence that digital billboards are representative of the times and general industry practice. However, industry trends do not necessarily align with Laramie's local planning goals. Furthermore, their claim of positive community feedback from stakeholder engagement has, in our eyes, not been substantiated. But that was in one of the letters that they submitted, or the letter they submitted regarding the text amendment. We, to date, have received no documentation or summaries of the the supposed focus groups, and without these, um, we don't feel like there's reason to act on this. Lamar has also compared the request to recently approved variants that this board approved for a digital sign at the Albany County Courthouse. However, we feel like this comparison is misleading. For one, the county's, the the digital or the EMC that was approved by this board was not a billboard. It was a seventy-five square foot EMC, which EMCs are not allowed in the DC zoning district. However, it's seventy-five, the the one that was approved was seventy-five square feet. It was a monument sign, which is an allowed sign in neighboring zoning districts very close. The Albany County Courthouse is just about the outer perimeter of the DC zoning district, so that was taken into account. Again, seventy-five square feet EMC monument sign. Lamar's proposed digital billboard, by contrast, I think, is coming in around two hundred and fifty square feet, more than you do the math, much, much larger and a billboard as well, which is not allowed in any zoning district uh other than an overlay um buffer of I eighty. Um, so we feel like that this is apples and oranges, and that this argument does not hold any water at all. I should say, this statement uh that this variance for the county courthouse sign sets any type of precedent for what we're discussing this evening. Apples and oranges from our standpoint. Finally, it's important to highlight the staff engaged with Lamar throughout this process and communicated our concerns early on. Lamar was informed that their request conflicted with city policies from the very start, and that staff would recommend denial. From the very start, our position has not changed. Despite this, they proceeded with the application and as, you know, Simon will will hear the variance, they submitted the variance request as well with this knowledge of staff recommendation. Um, and and I just want to touch again on a a statement made in the letter and your that was sent to you last week uh as far as the communication. Um, we value that. We value transparency and communication with any applicant. And in this case, um, I did do a search, and there's thirty-six emails dating back to August twenty twenty-three that I personally sent to Pence and McMillan, who is the applicant's recommend uh uh representative here. So um our standpoint should not ever have been any um, there there shouldn't have been any uh question as to where staff stood along the way. We were put in between a rock and a in a hard place, given all this information that I've already uh given because we want to aid an applicant in in getting done what they want to get done. We will show them the path, but as staff, we have the UDC to uphold. So any recommendation to a code section that they should look at, or this or that, all was with the caveat that we are gonna recommend denial of both the text amendment and the and the variance, and I hope that's very clear. So in conclusion, the proposed amendment undermines Laramie's longstanding effort to reduce billboard clutter, improve community aesthetics, and ensure that nonconforming uses are gradually phased out rather than expanded. So for these reasons, staff recommends denial of this text amendment. Um, and I am glad to answer any questions at this point, but of course, we have representatives from Pence and McMillan here as well.
Okay, thank you, Philip. Um, questions from commission to Philip? Tom?
Uh, yeah, one question reading this text amendment. Unless I'm wrong, this basically, if approved, would make this an administrative procedure, and they wouldn't need to get for a permit to change over one of the billboards. They wouldn't have to come before this body or any other body.
Honorable Chair, through you, that would be correct. In the nonconforming in fifteen twenty-two, the nonconforming chapter, uh, there are provisions there. If met, then uh it can be done administratively. Yeah.
All right, and uh the next question I have, I didn't, I was gonna pull it out and look at the discussion on the uh on the county sign there. We we did discuss the possibility that it might create a precedent, as I recall. It was thoroughly discussed, and we came to the conclusion that it seemed to be apples and oranges. Uh, and although, you know, they make a good case that it's an electronic billboard, it's just a little one that's lower, but I mean, it's it doesn't seem to be in the same vein. It's a also in the third, my third comment on this is I think this is the fourth time we've discussed this as a body. We had a work session on it almost two years ago, and there hasn't really been a lot of enthusiastic support for it. So I I understand that, you know, business needs to make money, and this is a way to bring the billboard business into twentieth century, twenty-first century. But uh and I I understand that, you know, their their need to do that. It's just that there are better places to do that. Uh, so that's all I've got to say on it.
Honorable Chair, if I could respond
Sure.
To those two things. And and again, um, you know, the the variance for the county courthouse was brought up many times in the letters that Pence and McMillan uh sent over, and the variance before you is asking for a two hundred and fifty square foot billboard, not for a seventy-five square foot EMC. That would be a completely, be in a completely different boat right now at this moment if this variance was for a twenty-five or for a seventy-five square foot monument sign at road level, at street level. But that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about a billboard. So um, and then secondly, just to set the record straight, yes, this board has had one work session. We've never had a, uh, well, we did, we had the work session, and then we had this application when it was just postponed back in November, but that that's those are the those are the two times that this has come up.
Thanks for the clarification, Philip. Donald?
So Philip, just just for clarification, uh, is the sign which we have approved uh to go on the courthouse grounds, is that technically an EMC, an on-premise electronic message center?
That would be, no, Honorable Chair, through you, that would be an on-premise EMC.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Would this also apply to public facilities, like fairgrounds?
Honorable Chair, through you, variances are done on a case-by-case basis. If the fairgrounds wanted to have a billboard or an EMC, I'm not sure off the top of my head what zoning district they're in, but if they would require a, you know, variance from from where they are, then it would just be it would just be based on on that site. We would have to look at all these um sections that I I went over with you for this specific or for for this specific area. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm getting the the variance mixed up again. No, because this is for non, this is for existing billboards. So this is not like there's I'm not sure, are you, is there a billboard there? I don't at at the fairgrounds?
Well, they have one just advertising events, but they're thinking of going towards an electronic one.
Yeah, I mean, that would be most likely an on-premise EMC, which would be permitted if it met the square footage and setbacks and and things like that.
Good. Okay, well, if there's no more questions from commission, we'll have the applicant come up and talk to us.
Honorable Chair and members of the commission, my name is Megan Getz. I'm here representing Lamar. Um, I I want to make clear that the applicant is Lamar and not Pence and McMillan. I'm the applicant's attorney, and so Lamar is here today. You may have uh recall, for those of you who have sat on the commission when we did our work session, um Craig Bendexson is here. He's sitting closest to the wall. He's the general manager of Lamar in Wyoming, so he's a Cheyenne Laramie guy. Sitting right next to him is Jamie Rideout. Jamie is also in charge of the real estate operations. And then we have Eric Johnson, who traveled here uh yesterday and has been here from South Dakota. He's with Daktronics because you all had so many specific questions about the interface of the the board itself, and based on some of the comments that were in uh the staff reports about uh illuminations and different components of the board. Uh, Mr. Johnson is here to be able to explain and and show that to you because I do believe there is a a misperception on what this board is looking to do or what these boards are looking to do. And originally, when we approached the city, we had conducted focus groups with the business community, and we approached both the city and the county, and there was overwhelming support on how this would improve downtown and local businesses because ninety-three percent of what billboards are used to advertise is for local business. That's why you don't see um business, you don't see converted boards on the interstate for local business because it's not driving in that local business. Ninety-three percent say um of advertisements that are utilized on a board drive your local businesses. So our entities that are downtown that are suffering, our businesses, our hospitals, our schools, the university, they have the opportunity to have a much more affordable medium. And the reason we approached you was because of this big boomerang advertisement, this big boomerang sign that was generated by Laramie City Council that said, we are looking for ways to communicate with you. We are looking for ways to engage the community with you, and we have an incredibly outdated static sign on Twentieth and Grand that is less bright, even if converted digitally, than the Taco John sign that's sitting right next to it. It's less bright than the lights that are illuminating in that parking lot. It's less bright than the already scrolling digital images you see when you go along the grand corridor. I'll remind you that you have a bank with an electronic messaging system that's running. You have an entire credit union that has electronic messages with digital running turkeys during Thanksgiving or digital snoopy's during Christmas that are running along that side. You have a business that's celebrating when the University of Wyoming is playing and it's advertising when the games are. And now it's not apples to oranges. Now you have a new, not an existing sign, but a new sign that you all approved for the very same reasons we're asking you to convert either one or all of these signs. So when we approached your staff, we said our primary focus is on the sign at Twentieth and Grand. It's already cluttered. It's already established that there are a lot of signs along that corridor. We said, let us bring this to current digital technology and give the city an opportunity to have one of the eight slots that is available for advertisement to use at your peruse, to use at your discretion, to use to advertise what's happening in the community, to use to acknowledge um uh environmental-related events, to advertise when the the Fourth Street is closed due to a gas leak. When COVID hits, here's where you can go get your testing. When the University of Wyoming is playing a game, here's where the parking is going to be a nightmare, and the traffic is going to be a nightmare. But the staff said, no, we we think it would be a better approach for you to propose an amendment that would cover all of the existing signs. So we did that, and we followed staff's instruction under which parameter of the code they recommended would be the best. Staff came back to us and said, no, we think it would be better under the nonconforming use. That's why you postponed your November twenty-fifth meeting, and we came before you today. So the text amendment, sure, that is favorable to Lamar, right? Because they would have more signs within the community that would be available. We tried to meet staff's recommendation and also most of the other communities in Wyoming that have this in their UDC and propose a one-to-one removal. Lamar has removed twenty-five signs within the community already. So we're not asking to put up something new. We're not asking to change what's what what wasn't there before, like you did for the courthouse. We're simply asking to use current technology like you would with a new cell phone instead of your rotary phone to be able to advertise in a less cluttery and a more aesthetic way. So I'd like to show you what these boards look like. Would you mind pulling that up? Because many of you have not seen, I'm not gonna go through this whole presentation. I know that several of you have seen it. Thank you so much. But I want you to see what the board looks like because this is not something that you're envisioning down Las Vegas Boulevard. It it's it's just a modern way, frankly, the way that our adjacent communities, Cheyenne, Casper, Rock Springs, Green River, Sweetwater County are communicating with their constituents. If I just push this, do you think it'll go? Okay. Does anyone have any questions about Lamar as a company?
I I do have a question. What's the increase in profitability to Lamar, switching from a static sign to a digital sign per month?
I don't have the numbers for that to give to you um in specifics, but yes, there's an increase. Of course, there's an increase, but it makes it available for more people to advertise within our community. The cost of a static board and the ability to change that static board is much more of a hardship for someone to use. If you have an electronic, real-time messaging system with eight slots, one dedicated to the city, you have more interested in individuals who can afford to utilize the medium.
But could you ballpark, give me a ballpark estimate? Is it a twofold, eightfold increase?
I I don't, I don't know that, and I don't know if any of you can can give what that ballpark increase is. Sure.
Frank Bendix and Lamar. Um, yeah, so it 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 totally depends. The opportunity is more um with what we're proposing, there would be eight slots um available to sell. One would go to the community, so we'd have seven slots versus one. So it would have the opportunity to have, you know, up to seven times more. It just depends on what our occupancy would be.
See, the the issue I have, and you've heard this before, and you've heard it from from several people on the board, is that this is being framed as mostly as a public service uh to the community because there would be the opportunity to do free advertising. I guess it would be kind of nice to hear an acknowledgement that what's driving this is the ability to expose people to more ads.
There is certainly the ability on a board to expose to more ads, but it also then with the proposed text amendment decreases and follows your it it's conforming with what is stated as policy of removing a board. So it was removing a board to have the opportunity to modernize the technology and focus and focus and commit in a digital aesthetic way, so that our businesses, our community, um, economics that are thriving and driving our economy have the opportunity to advertise their services, because right now they can't. They can't afford the one-time slot.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course. Um, we provided the history about Lamar and its involvement in the community and what it does as far as giving back to the nonprofits, not just the community, but donating time to organizations like the United Way, donating time to the nonprofits or public emergencies. We've talked about the technical information, the proposed locations, the details and the benefits, as well as the safety. And the comments that have been provided as far as safety are not matched by the reports done by the Wyoming Highway Patrol and Association, as well as many of the federal agencies that govern traffic statistics and studies. This was what was on the front page of the paper. And the paper said, "Tell us how we can communicate better with you. Tell us how we can get you engaged and involved." And giving the government, giving the community one slot to do that is certainly a way. Do you mind pushing play? This is what a real-time sign or real-time board looked like.
Dynamic digital designs, also known as iSpots, have a little something extra. Adding an element that's instant, informative, and/or interactive is a great way to make a digital ad stand out. Lamar's social media capabilities pull real-time social media feeds and place them on large format out-of-home billboards. Social media capabilities include Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram, allowing a client to extend their social efforts to a larger target audience. There is no additional charge to implement social media, and it only requires a few steps. Lamar offers several digital capabilities that are easy to use and are a great way to create interesting, memorable impressions among your target audience. Consider dynamic digital ideas for your current and future campaigns with Lamar Advertising.
I have, I have a question. So when you say a slot, is it that you have one image on the board that's a one advertiser? That's one slot, and then it fades or moves into eight or seven, eight different, um, images that just scroll through. You don't have multiple advertisers on, on one, on, on one image?
Correct. It's, it's essentially eight static slots. So it's eight static pictures that change over with, with, with time, with, with a delay. So it's not a scrolling board, or it's not a scrolling video, as you would perhaps compare it to.
Okay.
Thank you. Do you have questions beyond, thank you Chair for that question, beyond how the board itself works?
It's not moving.
It's not moving. Static images that just have the ability to rotate a picture as opposed to any sort of movement or video.
Do you, um, know how many billboards are in Laramie, non-Lamar billboards? You know, that would be, um, applied, that would be subject to this text amendment?
Honorable Chair through you, Lamar has the only billboards within city limits that we know of.
And that's what, five or something like that?
That's right.
Correct. Correct. There were, when we originally came in, in what the text amendment is designed to is for four. There are five, but three of them were, would be of interest on the Third Street corridor and then this one on Grand. Everything else is outside of the city limits. Lamar currently operates 18 LED digital displays across the state with the highest advertising rates and occupancy. So as you're in our other adjacent communities, these are what are being utilized and what are being, um, the means and the mechanisms for advertising. If you, if you drive into Cheyenne across the bridge, you, you can see and you can note, I mean, I was directed just the other day to construction as I was going to testify at the Capitol. So, I mean, there are opportunities to communicate with your constituents in real time. Now, as far as the technical information of the board, I'd like to invite Mr. Johnson up so that you can see what the board looks like. First of all, it's dramatically environmentally more friendly than the static board, because you're not dealing with the vinyl or the rip if the winds get to it. What, what happens is the pieces and the components of the board itself are environmentally friendly and are recycled. I would like, uh, Mr. Johnson to actually show you a module of the board and to answer your questions about light, because you can actually have less environmental or light pollution with the digital board than with the static board that shoots up the light right now, 24 hours a day.
Good evening. Eric Johnson, with Daktronics. An expert when it comes to the technical abilities of the billboard, whether it's a control, the face, what it's made of, able to answer any questions that you do have. Um, have you, anyone seen this up close? You know what this is?
LED bulbs.
What did she say?
Looks like LEDs.
LEDs? Yeah, this is a module. This is what is comprised of, whether it's the small display that we talked about that was 75 feet, or the larger billboard. This is what it's made of. This is what you see. You see a black surface with red, green, and blue LEDs on there. With louvers that shade the top. I don't know if you can see it from there. But what that does, the louvers make the display look black, makes the colors pop and makes it look bright, vibrant. Shades from the sun. But what it also does is it eliminates upward goal, keeps the skies darker, forces the LEDs to come out. Um, what you guys probably have seen in your house are your normal light bulbs, right? They produce a light that is equal around the entire light bulb in all directions. So if you have a light bulb facing out, the light that's coming out front is the same that's coming out the side. An LED is a little bit different. LED has light that's focused more towards the target audience. It's focused straight out and in front of the display. As you move to the sides, that light is diminished, both horizontally and vertically. Okay? And in this module, this is what people see. This is the, the piece that people are looking at, right? The back of it, we have signal redundant and, uh, primary with the power. With that signal, if a cable goes bad or another module goes bad, we're able to minimize visual outages, black spots, a quilting pattern, if you will, from the display. Keeps the image very nice looking. That's kind of the technology of this. Um, a digital display not only works during the day, it also works at night. We have a multi-directional light sensor that has three sensors. Has a sensor in the front, the back, and the bottom. That bottom sensor measures the ambient light, and the front sensor is measured like the, the direct light from the sun. So in the middle of the day, when the sun is directly overhead, or when it's cloudy or rainy or snowy, the display is not at 100% brightness. It's not at 6,500 nits. It's probably more at 50% brightness, a lot dimmer than one might think. So we have a lot of things in place, um, with the control system that keeps those parameters in place, so it doesn't become a nuisance, so it doesn't cause glare. Our goal as a company is to be neighborhood-friendly. We do not want our billboards sticking out. We don't want to be on the news. We're here just to exist and help other companies sell their ads, whether it's on-premise or off-premise. Any questions on the technology at all?
No, I don't think so.
I, I will, thank you so much, Eric. I'll show you the, the, I have a slide that talks about the live feed and the control as far as the operations and of the content of the message itself, so that there is not an ability for someone to, we've talked about this before, to get in and upload something that was inappropriate. Um, there's direct control to stop that type of content.
And Chair, can I just clarify for our discussion? Some of this seems relevant to the variance. And, and if it's the most efficient for you to go through the inform, I don't want to cut off the information you have to present, but I feel like the decision that we have in this matter before us is tied to the standards, um, that we have to evaluate it under. And so can you address those specifically so that we can act on the text amendments and then move to the question of the specific variance? Because that's actually a different body that needs to make that decision.
Absolutely. So what my hope was, was based on the last conversations that I've had, both with your body, with council, and in the county, given the turnover, there was some information that didn't seem to get communicated. So I will address each, I'm not going to repeat myself when it gets to the variance, even though it's the same body, just a different board of adjustments. So I will address all of, well, I, I don't want to take too much time, but I'll address all of the components.
Well, I guess, and I'm one of the people who heard it before, so I'm, I, I'll admit, I'm getting a little impatient, because I feel like, personally, I feel like the staff has done their job in looking at the applicable standards and made the case that the text amendments should not be approved. And this is a recommendation that we have to make to the council in this case. And I feel like you're making policy arguments and calls about whether it's really attractive or not, or it's less light or, or not. And in the end, the question about the text amendments is, that's a decision that the council is going to make, because we're just making a recommendation to deny it. Um, the variance is a different question, but, but I, 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 I want to know if there's anything that you have to dispute and you want us to reconsider some, what was stated in the staff report in terms of the findings.
Uh, Honorable Chair, Council, or excuse me, Commissioner, yes. Um, I believe that, uh, there are several items which should be disputed and, uh, are not consistent with prior actions by this commission. Respectfully, from a legal standard and from what the Wyoming and the United States Supreme Court has set, is the Pandora's Box was opened when the approval of the digital sign by the Albany Court, County Courthouse was made. Uh, the reason behind a non-conformance with established plans ignores that Lamar is not looking to expand its billboard presence. It's simply looking to bring up-to-date the existing signs that are there, that are within the city limits, to a modern aesthetic technology. Um, as far as conflicting with non-conforming use regulations, it directly ignores that a new digital sign was just added to this community, and it was not an improvement or a change of an existing sign. It's now a content-based discussion. It's a content-based discussion as far as whether or not this body is limiting approval of a digital sign only to governmental interests and to community interests versus business advertisement and, and business interests of the community. And that content-based regulation is not permitted. As far as the zoning conflicts, the proposed billboard is in the existing locations that they are currently in and will remain nearly identical in every way. As I said, it's a static scroll of eight different images versus one. The visual and the light pollution that is pointed out in your staff report is inaccurate for the reasons that Mr. Johnson just described. The high-definition static images do not scroll. They do not flash. They're more environmentally friendly. Forty-six states allow them. They use lighting practices that will actually reduce the light pollution to the existing neighbors, as well as minimize the brightness at night. And the precedent setting is already there. I, I understand, believe me, I do, that there is a, a distinction that wants to be made between what was approved for the courthouse and this, and these particular boards. But under the, the standards and the standard of review, um, that the United States Supreme Court has said, it's now message and content-based, and respectfully, it's, it's not a difference. It is apples to apples and not apples to oranges. So those are my rebuttals to the report and the recommendations itself.
Thank you.
Thank you. Donald?
So I just want to be clear, because you made the statement in one of your letters that the signs are basically the same size. And yet Philip is saying, "No, the monument sign is considerably smaller." Do you agree with that?
I do agree with that. I, well, I agree, we went back and we looked at the actual specs of the sign that was approved by the courthouse. And if you look at the, the courthouse sign, since it'll be double-facing, it's 75 square feet. So it's 150 with both sides that are able to be, um, utilized at a time. Lamar is looking at its size on its sign, um, as, as far as a facing goes, and it, it is almost double that. What I, what I want to clarify is that there was a representation made earlier that it was in the 300-square-foot realm, and that is not accurate. It's because of the scope of the border, and the actual sign itself will be less, it'll be smaller than the static sign that is there now.
So Philip is wrong, is what you're saying?
He says 242 square feet is the number mentioned, haven't we?
Yes.
Is that number correct?
That number is correct.
Okay.
Well, i- is, is it your, your billboard, is it going to have images on both sides of the sign? Just like it does now?
Correct.
And so you're with 240 square feet on one side?
Correct.
And so you double it, so it's now 500 square feet? I mean, you're, and you're using the, the 75 feet on both sides to be 150 feet. So, I mean, it, it doesn't make much difference, that argument, you know? Because you're, you're using both sides of your billboard sign, so.
Other than we're reducing the footprint of what is currently there, and it's an existing sign and not a new sign of new text and new signage.
So, um, I mean, I, I remember in our discussions, um, earlier that, you know, there, there, there was no, you couldn't determine, have content-based, um, decisions being made. So you, you're making the argument that you think it is a content base? And, you know, I, I don't think we've assumed that as, as what's, what's guiding, uh, our discussion. So, so a question, Derek, has, has, has this gone in, 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 she's, you know, talking legal Supreme Court and, and as a city attorney weighed in on, on this? Is, is there, um, what would the li, the legal liability maybe if we were to deny this, uh, request?
Honorable Chair, if I may, um, I can answer that. He is aware, our attorneys are aware of, of what's going on, but it is the choice of, of this body. I mean, if the variance, especially afterwards, I want to keep us on task on the text amendment, but that would be appealed to general, or to district court, which would then obviously involve them to a greater deal. But they are, they are aware, and at this time, they are in, um, you know, in agreement with what planning staff does recommend.
Sure.
And, well, I'd like to recommend that we, uh, go ahead and act on the matter that is before us, which is the text amendments. In my view, um, this issue of the similarity is, is relevant to the variance question, but it is not determinative on the question of the proposed text amendment. Because that, that, as Philip articulated, and, and the way I see it, the proposed text amendments are to change the system, uh, in place. And, and I thought one of the most compelling things in the staff report and what Philip reiterated in his statement is that the billboards themselves are non-conforming uses. And that, and we are moving, we, we've made, the city and the council has made a policy choice, as reflected in the documents that are, uh, specified in the staff report, that we don't want billboards in. And so I, I don't feel it's appropriate, and I, I strongly support and will move to, um, uh, act as the staff has recommended, uh, recommended on the ta, on the text amendments, because, um, the, the question of the variance and it's, and the precedent that may have been set by acting on the specific site, that's a specific situation. But I think that it has been fully, um, supported to, to deny the text amendments as they were proposed, to change the system that's in place. And, and we're just making a recommendation to the council, and it's their decision in the end. So I, I would, I would like to make, unless there's further discussion, I would like to act on that and, and prepare to make a motion to do so.
Is there any further discussion, Donald?
We have a discussion after.
Honorable Chair, we, sorry, before you guys make the, the motion, we would need public comment if there was any.
Okay, right. Donald?
So I would just like to say that, uh, the issue for me is the same issue that goes for many communities. Uh, I looked up, uh, communities where EMCs are banned, and this, this list- I looked up at communities where EMCs are banned, and this, this list may be out of date. So Denver, Houston, St. Louis, Kansas City, San Francisco, and Rapid City. And you earlier said that forty-eight states allow digital billboards. The information that I had is that it's, there are four states that do not allow them, Alaska, Hawaii, Maine, and Vermont. So I guess my question to you is, since you see these as aesthetically pleasant and convenient and helpful to the communities, why do you think they're banned in those states and communities?
Commissioner, through your chair, I can't speak to what other states have decided or not decided, and it would be imprudent of me to guess or speculate. What I can say is that the communities that Lamar has worked with in the state of Wyoming where we live utilize and recognize that they're valuable to the community and the businesses that are trying to survive, particularly in this time.
I guess I'm really uncomfortable with this body and, I think, down the road, the city council, being bullied in this way. I think it's inappropriate. I think communities have a right to set their own standards. And what we are being told is, if we don't approve this, we will end up in court. And I think that is inappropriate. The, I, I support what the Planning Division has done. I think they have answered your questions. And coming here, which you're entitled to do, and subjecting us ironically to more advertising is not right.
Any other questions from? Okay, is there public, public comment on, on this, this matter?
I would, as Meghan gets, and I would offer public comment again on behalf of Lamar because, Commissioner, no one is trying to bully anything. What we are trying to do is communicate the information and the messaging that would be available and utilize what this council and this body has done with, on behalf of another new existing sign.
If I, if I may, I, I think this is odd. I've, I've have objections to changing law or writing law for one specific event. And this text amendment is basically writing law for one event. And we've, we've done some text amendments in the past, but they generally concern development, other possibilities. And as a general rule, this is a text amendment that benefits one party. And it turns it into administrative procedure. And I, I just have problems with writing law for one, for one party. And I think it would be bad law to do that. I have great sympathy, and I may vote for the variance. But I just can't see writing a law for, for one party, for one specific instance. And that's what this is. This is writing law for one specific instance. Laws should be a little more general and broad-based, I think. That's all I.
Any final comments before a motion by commission? Okay, is there a motion?
So I move to recommend that the city council deny amendments to fifteen-point-twenty-two of the Laramie Municipal Code based on findings of fact and conclusions of law and as recommended by staff.
Second.
Okay, Tom, second. Final discussion? Seeing none? Roll call vote?
Pacino?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Madam Moore?
Aye.
Isla White?
Aye.
O'Toole?
Aye.
Schneider?
Nay.
Anne Moody?
Aye.
There's six yeses and one no.
Okay, text amendment is recommended to deny the city council. So, um, that's all we have for the, the, the planning department. Is there a motion to adjourn? And, hold on, is there a motion to adjourn as, as Planning Commission and reconvene as the Board of Adjustment?
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor of this, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed, say nay. Okay, we're now Board of Adjustment. So we are considering variance dash, V A R dash twenty-four dash oh-seven, Lamar Advertising Digital Billboard Variance Request from Sections of Laramie Municipal Code fifteen dot fourteen dot one-twenty dot E dot two dot C. And if there's anybody out there that is going to provide testimony and discussion, we will have to swear you in. So all folks out there that, that are going to talk, do you sort of tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, we do.
Yes, 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 yes? Oh, okay, everyone said yes. Philip, here on.
Yes, Honorable Chair, members of the commission, it's been great lead-up to this with the text amendment, staff report. And I won't repeat a lot of the portions of that as far as our, our basis for recommending denial of this variance and the text amendment for that matter. But I just want everyone on this board, the Board of Adjustment, to hear what needs to happen in order to approve a variance. And pursuant to Laramie Municipal Code Section fifteen-six, the Board of Adjustment must find that all of the following criteria that I'm about to go over have been met to approve the variance. Not just one, it's not just pick one or two. It's got to be, all of these have to be met in order for this variance to be approved by this Board of Adjustment. Again, a lot of the foundational information, I will just summarize. The concerns that we have before I get into the findings that need to be met. One, incompatibility with zoning regulations. Properties located in a B-two business zoning district where digital billboards are explicitly prohibited by L M C fifteen fourteen one-twenty. Secondly, visual and environmental concerns. It is true that in our city code, we have provisions for electronic messaging centers. That digital, which a digital billboard could fall under, and that's what is defined as in the I-eighty corridor as an off-premise EMC. So, within city limits, though, there is no comparison. There is no foundation set yet in our code since there, since these off-premise EMCs aren't allowed within city limits. So these distances that we have in code as far as three-hundred feet, a, a certain light output within three-hundred feet of a residential area, that's for a street-level sign. So again, we're talking about apples and oranges here when it comes to visual concerns and light output as well with this proposed variance. Lamar and, and their representatives from Pence and McMillan have repeatedly mentioned the precedent. And I want to reiterate the fact that if we were here tonight talking about a seventy-five-square-foot monument sign in front of talk, or in front of the doctor's office where this billboard currently is, would there be danger and precedent being set from the last county courthouse? Absolutely. But we're talking about a forty-foot-high sign that is two-hundred-and-forty-three square feet that is being changed. So it is apples and oranges. There's no question in our mind that, about that.
And if you want to wait for questions till you're done, that's okay. But, but on that point, I think it's a pretty important issue. And I, I'm just curious, just in terms of the facts that are involved. The, the sign, the county courthouse sign is not, would not be characterized as a non-conforming use. Is that, that correct? I mean, it, is, is that its status too? And I don't remember whether it was a brand-new thing that was allowed. But if I'm, this is to the point that you made in your memo at the very beginning, which is a key threshold question, which is that this sign that we're talking about may not even qualify, isn't necessarily eligible for a variance because you say it's a non-conforming sign and cannot be altered. So granting a variance in effect undermines, you say, conflict with the intent of the zoning laws. Was, was the county, did you, was it a similar situation?
Honorable Chair, through you, yes, the, and, and I believe that is where the confusion lies and, and in our minds with this direct comparison with these two. So the story with the county sign is that the EMCs are not allowed. They're prohibited, they're explicitly prohibited within the D.C. zoning district. And they.
But the county, the courthouse is not. It's adjacent to that district.
No, it is. The, the county courthouse is in the downtown.
So it is a non-conforming use.
So if it were built, and if, if it were built, which unfortunately, that variance application has actually expired. So if they wanted to put an EMC up there, they would have to go through a whole nother variance process. But if it were built there, then it would be considered a non-conforming sign. And any changes, any expansion of it would go to the non-conforming sign section. And, and it would be handled in that manner. So that's the comparison is, hey, it was non-conforming in D.C. and billboards are non-conforming in B-two. This with, with what the variance we are this evening. However, I want to reiterate, variances are case-by-case and location-based and neighborhood-based. So I, I can't think of a better analogy than to say the applicant's argument of this being apples to apples would be apples to apples if we were considering a seventy-five-square-foot sign at street level in the monument sign status. Yes, in that case, we would be apples to apples and we, we would be heavily relying on the information from that last variance, given it was so similar. But that's not the case.
Or if it was a request for a bill, a forty-foot tall billboard as a non-conforming use and, and asking to, to build that new.
Exactly.
And, and be a non-conforming use. And then the question would be if later on they wanted to change, to expand or change that non-conforming use, you would then be back in the, in the variance mode to make it, make a change to a non-conforming.
Correct. In, in order to expand on a non-conforming use, yeah. Then i- if it doesn't meet the criteria in fifteen-twenty-two, then, then yeah, variance would need to be pursued. So that was the precedent statement I wanted to address. Alignment with Laramie's planning goals, I've mentioned this several times. We have this outline, we have approved plans that this variance is in direct conflict with. The Comprehensive Plan discourages billboard expansion in commercial corridors. The three-two-one-third-street plan emphasizes sign reduction and improved, for improved urban aesthetics. Historic downtown Laramie design guidelines explicitly oppose billboards to protect the character of commercial districts. And I, I will, I'll maybe skim on some of the points that were brought up in the letter that was shared with all of you regarding this variance. Again, another claim was made that there's support for electronic billboards through focus groups. Again, we're, we're just unaware and have never received any. We, we've had meetings. If those are what qualifies as focus groups, I would encourage the applicant to clarify that. But anything additional, we've never received. So we can't, we can't respond to anything we've never actually seen. There's a claim as well that other electronic messaging cen, this is a quote from the letter, "Other electronic messaging centers already exist in the area. So this digital billboard would not disrupt aesthetics." Again, this is blurring the lines between what is a permitted sign in a B-two district versus what this variance is for, which would be the allowance for a digital billboard, which is expressly prohibited in the B-two district. So yes, there are EMCs as the, as the applicant's representative mentioned. But that they, that's, again, I hate to keep using the apples and oranges analogy, but that's where we are. I'm not going to go over the claim that, quote, "The city approved a digital sign at the county courthouse, setting a precedent." I think we've gone through that. Glad to answer any questions, though. And now I do, I, I, I think I'm glad to, to answer any questions on that. But I want to go back to the heart of the matter here for variance, which, again, to, to reiterate the following criteria that I'm about to go over. Each one of these, A through F, they all need to be met. So as I'm going through these, I want you to, to consider strongly that it's not just one, but it's all A through F that need to be met in order to approve the variance. And, and I also want it to be on your mind that if, you, and I'll just, you know, jump ahead to our recommendation, which is going to be to deny this variance, that there are alternatives. This board has every right to approve the variance. But A through F need to be answered by the board. So if, if there is one or two that, as I'm going through this, you have conflict with, think about how you would reword it and justify it if you're leaning towards approving this. So A is that special circumstances or conditions exist that are peculiar to the land or building for which the adjustment is sought. Staff's response is that the applicant has not demonstrated that any unique or special conditions exist for the property at twenty-one thirty East Grand. Lots neither irregular in shape nor constrained by topographical conditions that would prevent the use of a standard-statted billboard. And what I'm going for here, what staff is going for here, is there's no, there's, like, if there was in a giant, if there was a giant hill before this, it would be a different story. But it's just, there, there isn't anything in that realm, in, in A, that staff can see that's unique to this site. It's just like every other site on, on, on Grand in that area as, as adjacent to Grand Avenue as far as we're concerned.
If I may, Philip, ah, the building doesn't necessarily imply it has to be a building to get a variance. I mean, the building, you're talking about the type of construction. It is a forty-foot sign of substantial nature. And so you're saying that we can't, we would have to get a conditional use permit to paint it?
Honorable Chair, through you, if I'm understanding the question correctly, you're, you're asking Commissioner Madam Moore whether if they just wanted to. Um, Commissioner Madam War whether if they just wanted to paint the billboard and maintain it, whether that would be allowed?
Yeah.
That would be, we don't have anything a- a- again, we can't find in code where just painting it. Is expanding.
Okay, how about?
Just maintaining.
How about changing the advertising, the vinyl?
Again, no, that's that's perfectly permissible as well. I mean, and that's how, yeah.
That's all I got for that one.
Uh, B, I'll jump to B now. The strict application of the code would deprive the applicant of the reasonable use of the land or building. Um, we disagree, staff responses that denial of the this this variant was. Variance would not deprive the applicant of reasonable use of the land. The existing static billboard can continue to be used for both commercial, whatever, we are content neutral, whatever you want to put on there. Um, that's fine. It's currently being used like that. It's non-conforming um and it can continue to be used like that, so it's not. Uh, we're not depriving the applicant of reasonable use there. And so and 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 the prohibition of billboards in the B two zoning district applies to all properties, so it's not. It's 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 not an area that has um spa- spot zoning case. Where the rest of it is all like I two, and then this one little area is uh B two, that's not the case. The entire corridor of third or of Grand is zoned business and B one or B two, so. C, the strict application of the code would deprive the applicant of access to alternative forms of energy. This one's not not applicable in this case. D, the granting of the variance is necessary for reasonable use thereof and is the minimum adjustment that will accomplish it. And this and the minimum adjustment that will accomplish this purpose. Staff response is that the request variance is not the minimum adjustment necessary for reasonable use of the property. Again, the current static billboard uh provides adequate opportunities for ad- advertising and public messaging. Whatever content, again, we're content neutral, there's nothing in our code, we're not allowed to regulate any type of content. And al- allowing this billboard here would significantly alter the character of signage in the B two district. And is not a minimal adjustment. E, the granting of the variance is in harmony with the general purposes. And intent of the code and will not be injurious to the neighborhood or detrimental to the public's welfare. Our response is that the introduction of a digital billboard in this location would not, in fact, be in harmony with the general purpose. Of the sign regulations outlined in the uh UDC. Um, the purpose of restricting billboards is to minimize visual cl- clutter and protect aesthetic character of Laramie's commercial corridors. And a digital billboard in this prominent location could negatively impact the visual environment. Potentially creating distractions for motorists and and there's a lot of different. Research out on this, the applicant did bring um a a piece of research uh that suggests. That they're not in fact um distracting, but. I I believe there are, the for every PhD, there's an equal opposite PhD, I believe. Or I was taught in grad school as well, but um I I also want to bring back the point here under E. Where it asks will not be injurious to the neighborhood or or detrimental to the public welfare. In this very, i- i- for for this variance um. We don't have much to go off of as far as. Distances, we we have regulation for illumination of EMCs. To the border of a residential um zoned parcel, which. The the di- the closest from the property line of where this billboard is being proposed. Is three hundred and fifty, between three hundred and forty, three hundred and sixty feet in both directions. Well, the university's zone R three, which is across the street to the north. Uh, that technically is our three property, but to the south on Garfield is also, it just goes about three hundred and fifty feet. Um, so ha- given that we don't have any regulations for. EMC or for off pri- off premise EMCs of this size, that close to residential areas. Leads us also uh in in um. To to question E, that this would. Not be injur- injurious to the neighborhood. We we can't answer that to the affirmative. Because we don't, we haven't established any code for signs this size. And and how far away? Does that need to be if we if if we do want to go that route? Um, because it's a monument sign, it's three hundred feet from a monument sign to a residential zone property. It has to meet a certain light output. Or it has to be a minimum at the property line or within that three hundred feet. When you elevate it to forty feet, it's completely different. I mean, who's been around when? The football game's going on at night. I mean, that billboard or that, the end zone. Sign there really lights up the whole area. So it's like, it's hard to say, I don't, and I. I would, I would let Lamar speak to the difference in 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 lighting there, but it's it's a lot of questions and that's where we're coming from on E. Lastly, the variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood or district in which the property is located. Nor substantially impair the use of development of adjacent property. And again, here staff response granting the variance would alter the essential character of the area by introducing digital signage. Of this nature of the uh on a billboard, which is currently prohibited in this zoning district. And legal notice was published, we uh back November eighth, this applicant's representative mentioned. We did postpone this item back around Thanksgiving. At that meeting was the only uh comment, and it was, it was a verbal com- comment by citizen Karen Voigt. Um, that you all heard in real time, that was against this uh variance request. So our resp- our recommendation is. Uh, to deny the requested variance. Uh, based on findings of fact and conclusions of law, and those findings are fact are again, the the A throughout that I just mentioned. Glad to take any questions.
Commissioners, questions for Philip?
I don't know, is it?
Tom?
Yeah, I know we have to go through. Approve it based on all of them. The last one, I don't really know, is it would change the character of the neighborhood. I mean, with all the signs that are up there right now and the silly sign the university put up on the foundation building. I don't know, it's light pollution is a problem. I'm I'm really just don't see it at that location. And it's a pretty well between Mulligan's and uh and the university. And then when they have games at the soccer fields. I mean, and and the university sign, I can see if they leave, when they leave the uh scoreboard on, which they've done by mistake. At four thirty in the morning, when I walk my dogs up on top of the mesa at Sirius Sky Techno, I can read it. I can read it from there, so I don't know is it's gonna make anything any worse than what's already there. So uh, that one I find a little specious, but you know. I think it could, that it's a, there's a case to be made that. By denying them uh. This uh variance that it will cause them harm. Because I, it will affect their ability to, you know, improve the technology that comes along now. There's, you know, that that's an arguable point, whether we're in, whether we sit here to. Make it easier for a business to make a profit or not, but there is a case to be made on that particular point that it. Could de- harm them uh and. You know, I'm 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 always going to lean in favor of a business, that's just my my nature. I don't think I can find enough reasons to justify all six. Other requirements, but I do find a strong case for at least three of them. So I don't know if anybody else has anything, but I. I I do have sympathy with Lamar. I think if we'd had another location for this, it would have been a lot easier to do. And we might have been able to get through it, but you know, it's just. There, everybody I've talked to in the public doesn't like it. They didn't like the idea of the county sign either. And most people don't like electronic message centers that I've talked to. Whether they're monuments or billboards, most people don't like them. But I, that's all I've got to say on it. I still don't know how I'm gonna vote on it.
Thanks, Tom. Commissioners, questions for Philip? Okay, seeing none, the applicant, come on up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Megan Getz here on behalf of the applicant Lamar. Um, I provided in our response letter to you dated February third, twenty twenty-five. On pages, it it starts on page seven and it goes um. Just until page nine, where all of the eight A through E. Or excuse me, A through F sections of uh the requirements to grant the variance are addressed. And what um I've highlighted, both what we've provided within the application as well as response to Lamar's application. And and also, um, you know, one, one of my jobs as an attorney is to promote that. Decisions are consistent and that they're not arbitrary or capricious between different applicants. And that's, that's just, um, I I hope specifically Commissioner O'Toole. Or Board Member O'Toole doesn't view it as bullying, but more just as an opportunity for me to provide what. The reasoning was that was given before and why the reasoning would be consistent with this same application. So as it relates to the special circumstances or conditions, w- we, Lamar contends that. The existence of the sign, the location of the sign, just as uh Board Member Mattamore's comments were. It it's among and in with, and I printed off this sign just so you could see where that one land owner. That one property owner was located. You can see all of the parking lot lights that are already illuminating. Right next to it is the RB sign that is lit twenty-four seven. Right behind here is the Taco John's sign that is lit twenty-four seven. And Mr. Johnson would be better to speak that the the brightness and the alumes of those two signs. Not together, but individually exceed what we're contemplating for this instantaneous messaging system. On the board that also adapts to the day and the night signage. And so our response that this was a unique location is that it's. Where an existing sign is among the biggest or most populated corridor of our community of advertisements and signs. And so rather than saying, gosh, our county courthouse doesn't have a sign, we want to add one there. That's the unique circumstance. We're saying this is the existing sign that's there. And so the unique characteristics of it of it are, let's just modernize it and utilize modern technology.
Can I ask, can I ask you a question on that? So, so I think the, in looking, and I appreciate it, you did very carefully go through the criteria. Um, and I think um. Some of them uh aren't that that clear, but you would acknowledge that you have to meet them all. I mean, the burden, because it's a variance. I mean, we're in granting a variance, we're granting an exception. To the rules that are in place, and so you do have to meet all of them. And I guess I'd I'd like to focus. In on on the on the two that are really tied to this question of reasonable use that you have. Because I think those are the two that it's most difficult for you to to meet. Because they're, on the face of it, it seems there is a reasonable use there, which is the current use. You're using it as a billboard. And so I I I have trouble seeing how those two criteria um are met. That are tied to uh not having any reasonable use at all, and you have that use because. I don't know if grandfathered is the right term, but but essentially. You were, you're allowed to have a billboard there where it isn't otherwise, because that's what. You were there when the rules changed, I guess. So I do, you know, it's like, you already have been given one exception. And you can use it as a billboard. So so what? I I just have trouble seeing how that criterion is the first two that address um reasonable use. And so maybe you could just uh give us your best argument on that, why, why the, why that's met? And why you are denied reasonable use or the applicant is.
Uh, Board Board Member through you, Chair. Um, yes, so. The reasonable use that was, and I'm just gonna articulate this for you. The reasonable use that you adopted when you made a finding of fact that the EMC that was not permitted. On the courthouse was permitted and accepted is directly applicable here. The the finding included that there will be the ability for public events, emergency advisories. Public meeting amounts, announcements, time and temperature. And the typical for you uses for EMCs will be available in that particular case. And so our argument is is virtually identical and virtually the same. That while we have the opportunity to have one advertisement, we're being deprived of modernization. Or the technology that has come to make this board more applicable, more communicative. And and more real to the businesses, including Lamar. Uh, given the location and the use that it's at, we have, we are being denied the use of that spot now. By not being permitted to use the current technology. That is available to focus on providing those specific real-time community messages.
Well, and I'll I'll just share that I I guess I see it differently because um you're. I, what I hear you saying is that you need to do this. Or or it's of no use to you, but actually the standard is reasonable use, and you can still use it as a as a billboard. And and you're not, um, there's reasonable use still there, and that is the standard. Um, that is applied in granting variances. And I I hear, I mean, I I I hear the argument about. It, you know, well, if you did it here, then, and this is exactly the same, you should do it here in this circumstance. Or it's arbitrary and capricious, but there there are two things I'd like you to address that. That seem different about the circumstances. One, we've already discussed, which is the size. But I also have a question, to me, it seems like the content is different. Because yes, part of what you're gonna do, you're proposing to do is the community servicing. But as I understood it, that's only one piece of then advertisements that are rotating through there. And so I I feel like the content is different in this circumstance than it is related to the county as well. So if you, if you could address those two points.
Uh, Commissioner, or excuse me, Board Member through you, Chair. Uh, yes, so we've talked about the size, we've talked about that we're going to reduce the existing footprint of that board. By this, the new modernization of the technology. So yes, I understand your argument as it relates to the size that you approved for the courthouse. But this will actually be reduced and will be aesthetically and more appealing to the community than a static sign that can blow. Secondly, as it relates to the content, um, I would encourage that this board not get into a decision. That's making a determination based on a regulation or or even a determination of what that type of content would be. However, notwithstanding that, um, the. The type of advertisements that may come, whether or not it's that one slot or whether it's three of the other seven slots. I mean, it 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 very well could be very community driven. For example, um, Pens and Macmillan could purchase one of those spots and say, we're holding. An estate planning seminar for anyone who wants to come and learn about tools that are available for estate planning. The hospital could buy one of those slots and say, we're holding uh breast cancer screening awareness. And so those are directly community relevant, and they provide the same type of benefit. That the Albany County courthouse may say on their sign that says, we're having all of our COVID testing and. Um, pancreatic cancer or or whatever type of screenings available here. So, you know, the 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 community slot is there and available just as as frankly. An opportunity for this community to engage in messaging without that cost. for this community to engage in messaging without that cost. But the type of and content of those advertisements could be, in fact, more or just as community centered.
So it could be, but it could be something very different too. Yeah.
This this is what troubles me the most of. To me, uh, reasonable use of the structure, land or building would involve modernizing it with new technology, making it more efficient or in order to make more of a profit on it. To me, making a profit is a reasonable use. To make more of a profit is also a reasonable use. Comparing it to the EMC that the uh, kind of courthouse applied for, I don't think they're gonna build it. I don't think new commissioners care much for it. But that was not a profit-based item. And the reasonable use of that facility was, you know, it's on their land and was to notify the public of what the county is up to, which, you know, most people in this county have no idea what the county does. So I think it's totally different. That's where the argument falls apart. Making the argument that uh, modernizing the sign would uh, deprive them of reasonable opportunity to make a profit would be a much better argument than worrying about what the county does. That's the only, that's the problem I have with it is that uh, as a code, we're not in a business determining whether or not a business uh, makes a profit, you know?
Right.
This is only one item out of the si- out of the rest of it. So I have a problem with that particular item. I'm always gonna be in charge of the business. And this reason, the and item D, the granting of the variance is necessary for reasonable use thereof and is the minimum adjustment that will accomplish this. It may be the minimum adjustment that will accomplish the purpose of the applicant, right? But uh, I don't know is it does, it still doesn't meet the criteria to deal with the rest of them. They've got two good arguments on this one. As far as I'm concerned, I just, you know, I really don't care what the county does.
Satisfy all of that.
They have to satisfy all.
That they face because it's a variant.
That's what we're required to do by law. Um, you know, and I'm disappointed. I think, you know, I I've seen worse than uh, the advertising, that type of advertising on that sign. And uh, anybody's been to Las Vegas has some idea just how miserable that can get. I don't think that's an inappropriate place for it. But I don't know, I'm.
Well, I think.
I just don't see as it meets all the criteria.
I think there there are two, there are two questions that we have to answer in our own minds to have defensible decision here. And and one is if if we can't see a distinction between the the courthouse and this one, um, uh, then we do risk um, running uh, making a decision that's arbitrary and capricious. But I think I also, like you, am comfortable with the distinction between the two. So that's one issue.
Well, isn't it the nature of government to be arbitrary and capricious?
Honorable Chair, if if I may. Yeah, I just, I mean, the the discussion is is great, but I would encourage us to hear the rest of the applicant's testimony before we get into too much more discussion.
It's always good to have them hear what we're talking about and can address it as it goes. But you do deserve the opportunity to present your case. So yeah, finish please.
Uh, Mr. Chair and members of the board, um, we did lay out why we believe that all of those elements have been met. And I'm glad to go through that, but I believe you all have them in front of you. Um, certainly if um, the ability for Lamar to advertise and and be reasonably um, available to maximize its profit and its accommodations, as well as other businesses within the area to increase their income through advertisement is deemed by you all as a reasonable or or a an argument for additional reasonable use. We su- we support that. Um, but you know, really th- this this is uh, an existing sign that has so many existing features within the area that are directly compatible to what you all have already found as far as being a major arterial to communicate information, to allow for public involvement and in in a way and in a manner and a mechanism that is appropriate and less intrusive than the sign is that's already there. So I mean, we're really asking, Lamar is asking to make something that exists better. Lamar is asking you all in your challenges to the community to engage in um, communication and commitment and to bring something and make it nicer versus keeping something there that exists now to giving us the opportunity to do that. And we're in a location where this is where this is prime and ripe. I mean, whether or not people like EMCs, they are all around that location. And so that scrolling text is even more um, invasive than some instantaneous um, uh, uh, instantaneous slots that would be available to the public. Um, I I can tell that you all um, either have thoughts and opinions on this. And and so I've provided our information and our testimony and would stand by that in writing and would ask for you to consider that we want this community to be business friendly. We want this community to be guided by good principles, which you all have been thoughtful and mindful of. The reason that we requested a variance is because this particular sign is so applicable and so ripe for this modernization that will help our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other final questions for the applicant?
I I should say, Mr. Chair, that Mr. Johnson is available to describe the difference between the University of Wyoming sign that blasts, you know, in the end zone uh, versus what this sign will be. He can also compare it to what you see the University of Wyoming's foundation where it lights up colors along that board. Um, that is probably five times what this sign will be uh, when it's flashing different colors. So there's there's information that I can't provide as far as the looms, if you have that type of question.
Well, you made the point. That's nice. Okay. Any um, questions, technical or otherwise?
Public comment?
Uh, yeah, I am, but I'm just working through here. Okay. Um, is there any public, seeing none? Is there any public comment on this variance? Seeing none. Um, so any any final final thoughts? We've talked about this quite a bit. So.
Yeah, I just.
I I.
I'll just say.
Discussion and and I I I don't think that we've we've satisfied uh, you know, all all the conditions that we have to to um, consider.
Yeah, that's the way I look at it. I, there's no special circumstances or conditions for this particular variance to be approved. There's a lot of other good reasons. I mean, it.
It is a variance on a non-compliant.
It is con- very very to non-compliant.
When you get the grandfathered in non-compliance, it's for what it is at that time. And any expansion or or significance or change to that non-compliant grandfathered use.
Yes.
Is is, you know, hard, 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 hard to make to to make the case.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to have more advertisement to businesses, but you can't get over that hurdle.
Exactly. Okay. Okay, is there a motion on the on the floor?
Take your ways, sir.
Okay, I'll make a move. I've just gotta find the right like chair. I uh, um, I would like to move to deny the requested variance from Laramie Municipal Code fifteen point fourteen point one twenty point E point two point C, Roman numeral twelve, X I I, to permit the installation of a digital billboard at twenty-one thirty East Grand Avenue based on findings of fact and conclusions of law.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Donald. Any further discussion on this motion?
I say.
Sure, darling.
Uh. The city has, is trying to minimize the number of hoardings, billboards along certain corridors. There's places where they're appropriate and there's places where they're inappropriate. And I disagree with the statement that this makes advertising or messaging nicer nicer or more modern, simply because it's more modern. If it's in the wrong place, uh, it's intrusive. Um, and we're exposed to advertisements when you put gas in your car. In fact, in Safeway at the moment, there's two sets of advertisements, one on the pump and one overhead and they're going on at the same time. Uh, when we read newspapers online, I've canceled newspapers because of I just, uh, it's so distracting to deal with that. When we watch TV, when we go to the cinema, when we listen to the radio, when we're on social media, when we sit on an aircraft, we we can't avoid them. When we go through an airport, when we open our mailbox, as I did today, as I do every day, and they're full of ads. We are inundated with advertisements. And I fail to see why, if the city has adopted a policy trying to mi- minimize uh, uh, large hoardings along it within the city, that it can't apply that to situations like this. This will be an intrusive ad. Instead of one ad, we're gonna see eight ads. It's almost unavoidable. And the fact that they're gonna do public servicing doesn't make it analogous to uh, the public service announcement on the digital on the digital billboard that's that will probably go up uh, near the county courthouse. It's like comparing uh, Albany County Library with Barnes and Noble. I mean, they both do books. They both have readers, but one is primarily a public service and the other is primarily driven by the bottom line. And I think there is a place for digital advertising, but it's not along Grand Avenue.
Okay, thank you. Any other, any other co- let final comments? Seeing none, roll call vote on the motion?
Pacino?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Mattamore?
Aye.
Is there white is absent? O'Toole?
Aye.
Schneider?
Nay.
And Moody?
Aye.
That is five yeses, one no, and one absent.
Okay, so the motion to deny is approved. Um. And so is there a motion to adjourn as Board of Adjustment?
Still moved.
Fellas in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. So adjourned. Good discussion, thank you. Everyone.